Is it okay if I take this off? Or do you prefer that I take it off?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We'll take it off too.
That's the advantage of virtual training, not to have to wear a mask. And usually I encourage people to move up, but this way I'll leave my mask off and you can hear me better. I was a little worried. A lot of our local hosts were a little concerned. We got excited early in the summer about doing a bunch of in-person trainings. And they... I lost my remote. Where did it go? Ah, thanks. And then when cases started going up again, especially when we... And then when the legislature and the governor signed legislation to extend the ability to hold remote public meetings, most of our local hosts decided that they would make the training remote so that they wouldn't have to cancel the in-person training at the last minute. But having a good facility here, we just went forward. And I was kind of excited about it. So I hope I can live up to whatever expectations anybody's had. I also... I'll start out with a couple announcements. Tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00, we're doing a virtual... We're doing a webinar for Lewis County. And our schedule... We're doing that on rural planning. So some of the same concepts in this course, but are real focused on what rural municipalities are faced with right now. And our schedule, we're doing a number of regional events like this from now until mid-November. We have our calendars pretty much booked. And if you'd like to register for one of those, or anybody you are on board with who's missing tonight wants to register for one of those, look for our training schedule on our website. Our webs... We have a new website. And it's... Some have found it difficult, a little more difficult to navigate than our old website. So if you have trouble finding our schedule, send an email to localgov@dos.ny.gov. And that email address is on the last slide. So underline or highlight that email address and the phone number. And you'll be able to, if you have any trouble finding anything on our site, let us know and we'll send you right to it. So you can register for any of the workshops, whether they're in the Hudson Valley or Western New York. If they're on our schedule, you can register for them. And they're all free. And then we'll be doing statewide webinars in December and January that we always do. And we'll send that list to... We'll advertise those. We'll send them to Michael and Jefferson County Planning Department and other planning departments at Tug Hill. And we'll advertise those widely. But the idea of the regional workshops is that we like to have audiences of this size so that it's all... So that people aren't as intimidated about asking questions. And it's not crazy, like for some of the really big webinars when we have 300 people on them, we need four members of our staff doing the tech, two presenters, and somebody just working on the chat questions. So find our schedule and check it out every two weeks or so. If there isn't something that... If there's information missing, some of it we're waiting for confirmation. It's at this time of year when we're really busy, we update every couple weeks. Or actually, at this point, every week we've been updating. There are a couple handouts upfront. You have the handout that we highly encourage you to take. But those are publications, printed publications. All of them are on our website. They're a little harder to find than they used to be. But if you are having trouble looking, finding the publication that you want, again, email us, email us or call us. And we'll help you find that. All of those are on our website. So because we're in person tonight, we're doing a really basic course. I want it to be more about the discussion than the course. I told Michael I'm going to try to get through this quickly. But I won't get through it quickly if you're asking questions during, which I highly encourage. So it's about interaction tonight because we're not online. So if you have questions, just raise your hand or speak up and we'll address them. And I'll try to go at a reasonably quick pace so that we can get through the material and have time for your questions. So how many people are on planning boards? And then... So most of you, how many on zoning boards of appeals? Only one? Wow. Any members of local governing boards? Oh, great. It's always great to have members of local governing boards in our audiences. And how about municipal staff? So well, it's rare that... It's actually rare that we have more people in the audience on local governing boards than on zoning boards of appeals. So just a quick outline of the course. We'll talk about the statutory authority of planning boards. We'll do a little discussion of the comprehensive plan. We'll talk about what planning boards do, subdivision site plan review, special use permits. We'll talk about procedure and seeker which apply to all boards. And meetings and hearings also apply to all boards and decisions also apply to all boards. So the planning board is referred to as an administrative body. It's... Members are appointed, they're not elected, and they're considered public officers. So their qualification requirements and standards of conduct, you have to follow rules of ethics. And I think there's a little more on all of this. Yes, qualifications are on the next slide. This is kind of an introductory. You have to be at least 18, a citizen of the United States, and a resident of the municipality for which you're serving. Governing boards may not serve on the planning board. That's right statute. So that's a... That's an incompatibility of office. Members may be removed for cause. And here the statute is a little vague on purpose because in a lot of instances, the state statute is vague because it's leaving discretion up to local governments. We always say they're... The power to regulate land use is at the local level. So the state really does give local governments a lot of authority to determine their future in the form of zoning and administration of its land use policies. And you can have rules of procedure that define cause. Many boards don't. And you kind of know it when it happens. If there's a board member who misses meetings too frequently or is disruptive or is constantly unprofessional in meetings, you'll know it. And maybe some of you have had these experiences. Failure to receive training is among them. You could be stripped of the state statute. The state statute says if you fail to receive training, you can't be reappointed. But you could have that as cause for dismissal. But you can't dismiss a board member until after a hearing. And that's the last point on this slide. The appointing authority for planning board members and members of zoning boards of appeals is the town board. Most of you are probably from towns. Is anybody from a village or a state? Great. The village board, the village mayor with approval of the village board, the village board of trustees is the appointing authority for planning board members and members of zoning boards of appeals. And in cities, it's the mayor. There are five or seven members on the planning board. And your terms should be equal to the number of... Your years, the term years should be equal to the number of members on the board. So five members, five-year terms. And the way the statute's written, it's designed so that one member's term expires every year so that you don't have a bunch of people. And this happens sometimes, of course. People move away and resign. And the appointing authority has the ability to appoint a bunch of members of a board. But ideally, it's one term over each year. That way you have some institutional knowledge as well. And you have to file an oath of office. So if you... And if you don't file an oath of office at the beginning of your term, you could be... And I think it's within 30 days. If you fail to file your oath of office, you're considered a holdover. And you can be... If somebody discovers that you've done something that's unpopular and you haven't filed your office, somebody else can be appointed in your place. So make sure when you're appointed for the first time, reappointed, you file that oath of office to avoid that happening. It doesn't happen very often. Often there's some famous cases, which are those unusual cases are the ones that really get discussed. So statutes allow for alternates for conflicts of interest, but not merely for the inability to achieve a quorum. You have to supersede. Your local government board has to supersede statute and say, "We need an alternate. We're superseding town law." That... I shouldn't have this off the top of my head, which pertains to planning boards. And you can justify with that supersession using municipal law rule, the ability to have alternates for absences as well as conflicts of interest. And that's a really good thing to have because we've all probably experienced having a long agenda and it seems all of a sudden like you're not going to get a quorum and you don't want to turn your applicants away. You want to make sure you're able to have that meeting and have a quorum. Of course, and we'll talk about this a little more later on, there's the ability now until January 15th to hold remote meetings. So you should be able... It should be easier to get a quorum if you have the capacity to do that. Appointment of a chair is the same, believe it or not. Sometimes people are surprised at this. The town board, city mayor, village mayor with the approval of the board of trustees to... And if that appointing authority fails to make the appointment, then the board can elect a chair. And the chair isn't king. The chair is all one vote, just like the rest of you. And... But the chair's duties are to run the game and to be kind of the communicator between other boards. Once in a while, it's really good for the planning board and the zoning board of appeals to have a conference and just talk about applications, especially one that might have to go to both boards and the board, the local governing board as well. The training requirements, you probably all know well. It's four hours a year by statute. And local governments can increase or decrease those or change those rules according to their needs. And your local governing board, not us at the Department of State, approves what is... Determines ultimately what constitutes training. So... And I think most of them are pretty... Are pretty open to what should constitute training. I think a lot of people looked up on webinars last year and this year. And I argue, I always say, that if you have a complicated application, you have a municipal engineer or a consulting engineer who really wants to come in, who wants to come in and really educate you on reading those complicated plans, why shouldn't that constitute training? I think it's anything that you all feel is helping you in your jobs should be considered counting toward that four hours. And it's track locally. We don't track it at the Department of State. Failure to comply, there's no case law on training as far as I know. Failure to comply doesn't void decisions. So if somebody found out, finds out that you didn't get four hours one year, that doesn't invalidate decisions that you contributed to. The planning board, just by the nature of its name, as you can imagine, you're probably all interested in land use regulation. Land use, you're interested in the future of your municipality, how it grows and how certain areas are preserved. And you have that inherent interest in studying this and learning what's best for your community. And your advisory role is one of the important functions of the planning board. If the planning board or for that, the zoning board of appeals feels that there's something that's really important for the local governing board to consider in revising a comprehensive plan or revising zoning regulations or other land use regulations, that's something that you're free to make recommendations on. You can pass a resolution by... Of the whole board. And it carries a little more weight than that one member. And you can make investigations that contribute to those recommendations. So you might be tasked with a job like that by a local governing board to figure something out, to solve a problem. And all of that is... That's very important. Sometimes it's lost because as members of planning boards, we are often administering the regulations. We get site plan review applications and we're working on those. And it's hard to take on other things. But that is an important function of planning boards. The... And I think I'll leave it there. Any questions at this point? I don't want... The bad news here, the bad news tonight is you're only getting me. Usually it's two of us. But because we're not doing Lewis County tomorrow, I just came along and we're going back tonight. So if anybody has any questions, break up the monotony of just hearing from me. We call when... To get to the zoning board of appeals, an action has to be taken by the enforcement official. The enforcement official has to issue a violation, a building permit, or a denial for a building permit application. The exception to that is what we call the direct appeal. And you won't find the word direct... You won't find the term direct appeal in the statute. But the ability to do this is in site plan, special use permit, and subdivision statute. It's not in that for the zoning board of appeals. It's not in town law to... Now I'm drawing a blank. Zoning board of appeals, I usually can come up with that statute off the top of my head. But the... It'll come 267. It's not there. It's in the site plan and special use permit subdivision sections of statute, town law, village law, general city law. They're almost identical. And the direct appeal, what we call the direct appeal, is the ability, if you're reviewing an application, if you're reviewing a subdivision application, and that's what this photo is illustrating, a subdivision where the properties don't have... They have a deficiency of frontage. And so while the subdivision, instead of having to get a denial from the enforcement official, the planning board can make a recommendation and say, "We're recommending that the zoning board of appeals grant relief to the frontage requirement of these three houses, of these three lots proposed in the subdivision." And you can make that recommendation. And then it goes to the zoning board of appeals. And the zoning board of appeals can follow your recommendation or modify it some or deny it. And then it will come back to you for final approval. And you consider the zoning board of appeals, the grant by the zoning board of appeals, or the decision by the zoning board of appeals and make your final decision. So is everybody clear on this, the direct appeal? If there's a need for an area variance in any of these reviews, the planning board, there's no need for the enforcement official to deny the application. So it can go directly to the zoning board of appeals. The comprehensive plan, I know there are a couple municipalities in the county working on their comprehensive plans. Michael was telling me earlier. And the comprehensive plan is a framework for growth and preservation. It's the basis upon which your zoning regulations and other land regulations such as subdivision, site plan review, special use permit are based. And very important for your regulations. So if you're challenged under regulations and the possibility of somebody sees them as being unreasonable, you can point to your comprehensive plan as the basis of those laws. Yes?
How often should it be updated?
The comprehensive plan should be updated. The question was how often should the comprehensive plan be updated? Ideally, every five to 10 years for a fast-growing municipality. And I know you have a couple of those in this area. But if things really aren't changing all that quickly, it doesn't have to be that frequently. And you don't have to throw away your old comprehensive plan and do a $60,000 new comprehensive plan every five or 10 years. If you have the ability, especially if your members are inclined to make those updates yourselves, you can make these updates to your comprehensive plan fairly incrementally. And that's really... It might be asking a lot. Easier said than done. But that's really the way they should be done. And that's not how it happens most of the time. Most municipalities have comprehensive plans from the '60s or '70s. And sometimes '80s. If it's in this century, you're doing pretty well. And they just have to take the old one. Like the city... I spent part of my time in the city of Troy. And the city of Troy, the old comprehensive... The last comprehensive plan was done in the '60s. And everything in that comprehensive plan that was a problem would be something that we'd be celebrating today. Like it was all about the traffic congestion downtown and what to do with all the traffic. And now, of course, we want to attract more people downtown because at that time, they were tearing down buildings and making every street one-way and trying to get the traffic through. And so times do change. And it's important, it's really important to keep fairly... To keep current in that regard. But some of the challenges we're seeing in recent years, such as... Well, 10, 15 years ago was large-scale retail. Now it's what to do with all the empty retail space. And then large-scale solar, both on the small scale and the large, and other renewable energy challenges, those conflicts. If you don't have... And then you can justify in your comprehensive plan the... These days, it's... And I link good planning with climate planning, planning for resiliency and carbon... Carbon sequestration. Open space and forests and open land are good for the environment in more ways than just the scene of beauty. So those are more just further justification for working toward preserving your open space and small-scale agriculture. So... And sometimes they're called master plans. But it's... We say comprehensive plan because that's what it is in the statutes in New York State. And remember, comprehensive plan, one side of our office is local government efficiency. And so in your comprehensive plan, you should be considering as well... And not many municipalities do this. If you do, if you consider it, you're way ahead of the curve, financial sustainability, how you're going to pay for the maintenance of services without raising property taxes. So zoning should be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. That's what we say all the time. It's a defense against spot zoning. You've probably all heard that term. When somebody doesn't like what your zoning is, they might say, "That's spot zoning." They might not be correct. They probably aren't correct. But it's a defense against those challenges. And it's a good thing to have when you're applying for grant funding for updating your regulations or for other things like the DRI and other capital improvements and other programs. There might be other LWRPs, local waterfront revitalization programs and other bricks and mortar funding. If you have a comprehensive plan in place, the funders, the grant reviewers know you're serious about making improvements to your municipality. And in response to the question earlier, how do you know when it's time? Not just for the age, but if there's been a dramatic change in your community, a large employer is moving down or moved in for that matter. And as I mentioned a few minutes ago, new challenges that weren't considered, that aren't considered in zoning regulations or in your comprehensive plan. Even if you did a comprehensive plan five or 10 years ago, if they're relatively new, there's probably not much on renewable energy, for example. Or on resiliency, if you can talk about that for the recent frequent big storms. There was one in the result, the aftermath of Hurricane Ida, my hometown in the New York metro area. There were areas that flooded that weren't... That aren't in the flood zone. And so who knew about that? So that's something that current comprehensive plans have to consider. And also LED lights and moving displays, things like that. Like those are things that often catch planning boards and local governing boards off guard. Just the frequency of... And here's another one. I knew I was missing one. 5G, which we probably don't have a whole lot of, but other telecommunications, small cell. There are... With the rapid advancement of technology, it seems to get faster all the time. There are new challenges. So that's among the reasons you should really be considering small revisions to your comprehensive plan more frequently than those wholesale redraftings. And the planning board should have a role in the comprehensive planning process, either as a whole, being the special board, the board that oversees the revisions to the comprehensive plan. Or if there's a special board that the local governing board puts together that isn't just the planning board, but maybe some local stakeholders who aren't on the administrative boards or aren't serving the local government by business owners or longtime residents or new residents or very young people or students, there should be at least one member of the planning board on that special board. And adoption is by the local governing board, the elected board, not by... The planning board can take it and recommend it, but ultimately adoption is by the local governing board. And I won't spend a lot of time here. I'll just emphasize that when you're doing a comprehensive plan, you should have two public hearings. One by the board that's preparing it and the second by the local governing board which adopts it. And the local governing board is adopted... Is responsible for adopting local regulations. It's your elected officials. Only those who are elected can adopt laws, including your zoning laws, which land regulations, which are some of the most far-reaching laws that local governments have the ability to pass. And the governing board is also responsible for the ultimate decision. In the rest of this list, the planning board can make recommendations, but the decision is the local governing boards. And for regulatory authority. Now we're getting into the meat of what you do on your planning board. The governing board can delegate authority of review of site plan and special use permit. Sometimes zoning boards of appeals do special use permits. I think that trend is... It was more... There were more zoning boards of appeals and local governing boards doing special use permits in the '60s and '70s. special use permits in the sixties and seventies. But I think the trend is more toward planning boards reviewing special use permits. And subdivision review is, in statute, is limited to the planning board. So the local governing board doesn't delegate subdivision authority to the planning board. It's automatic. And the bottom points are pretty obvious. Subdivision is often somewhat misunderstood. It's really, because it's, this is really where you have to think about planning. Because if the proposed subdivision meets the regulations, it's, you don't just have to approve it. Like, if you have a minimum two-acre or minimum five acres, I mean, somebody, somebody wants to do a bunch of lots that are five acres and a couple that are a little, a little bigger, it's not just an automatic approval. Your goal, and I've only recently started to say this, but the goal of subdivision is to prevent the creation of useless lots. Sometimes somebody will say, "Well, I have this lot and it just, it's a little undersized, so can I have an, I, I want to have an area variance for it." They just want to, they want to eke out every penny of the value of that land. And if you just go ahead and approve it, and it's a very difficult to develop lot, and it's on a wetland, or it's on a steep slope, or something like that, and there are impediments to develop, to development, you are, the planning board is the, 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 you're, you're performing your public duty and helping future buyers of that property by not buying a bill of goods. Because it becomes, and when I was a municipal planner, this is something we ran into almost, almost monthly. There would be a problematic lot. Somebody would come, like, fuming into our office. We would come into our office in a rage that they weren't allowed to do something, or that something happened, like their, their house slid down a hillside, or they had, they had flooding problems. Because the, the lot was really not developable. But it was subdivided at some earlier time, and bad subdivisions become, become a, a legacy problem for future board, members of planning boards and future local, other future local officials. So when you're reviewing subdivisions, you've got to be careful that you don't approve a subdivision that results in a useless parcel. So that's my, my big message for subdivision review. Yes?
So like, in a lot of townships, a lot of the laws are going to affect, you know, like a lot of properties of grandchildren, right?
Yes.
So like, we have a lot right now that the property owner, so now to be able to do it, they have to go through the whole zoning board of appeals because it now doesn't meet the requirements.
Right, right. So the, the comment was, for anybody who didn't hear it, that there were a lot of legacy lots that were created before you had zoning. And sometimes those are, people can feel lucky that they got in under the wire. But then, when those properties are, have problems like fire, or they're destroyed in other ways by, by flood, or they're abandoned. But usually, if it, if it's a, if it's more than 50% damaged, most zoning, and this is not in statute, this is in most zoning regulations, it has to come into compliance with zoning. And the, so in order, if it's more than 50% damaged and they want to reuse, they want to build back, they, they would need, if it's a use that's no longer allowed a use variance, and if it's on a substandard-sized lot, an area variance, to, to reuse it. And of course, we have instances where there are owners who have multiple lots, and they just want to subdivide them and build on smaller lots so that they can reserve the right in the future to sell off other pieces. And that's, you can just say, or zoning board of appeals can just say, "No, you have the, you have the ability." And there might be legacy lots that are too small. Those owners with, an owner with a substandard-sized lot is guaranteed the ability to build on it. They have a good justification for receiving an area variance, but certainly if they own two adjacent parcels and they can combine them, they, they aren't guaranteed that area variance. And the distinction, of course, between major and minor is usually made when, with the number of lots being subdivided. Usually it's five lots. Anything under five is a minor subdivision. Anything over five is a major subdivision. And the big distinction is, sometimes it's the, the extension of utilities, sometimes it's the size of a lot. Usually it's the, the number of lots. And the, the difference between major and minor is that minor can often be done in one meeting. Major is, is often multiple meetings. There's, there might be preliminary plaque review and then preliminary, or, or a sketch plan review, sorry. And then preliminary plaque review, and then you might send the developer back to the drawing board for some modifications. And the list of what you're looking for with a major subdivision is a little longer. I think we, we may have that slightly in here. So you're doing this alone. I have a harder time looking ahead at what's coming. But the, usually, the, most of what comes in front of you will, will probably be minor. And there aren't as many major subdivisions across the state. There are just, a lot of the, the, the eighties and the nineties, the heyday of, of major subdivisions, major suburban subdivisions has, has kind of gone in different directions. Now, it's, it's larger lots with multi-unit residential, which is a trend a lot of us are seeing. The, and one distinction between, or one review that should definitely be minor, if you even consider it a subdivision, is a lot line adjustment, boundary or lot line adjustment. And the advantage, this is when your lot might be, there might be a lot that is non-conforming in size, and the owner might have to move. It, it might be as simple, rather than getting an area variance to build on a substandard-sized lot, the adjacent lot might be a whole lot bigger. And adjusting the lot line, just moving the lot line, might be the easy solution. And because you're not, when you do a lot line adjustment, you're not adding a new lot, you're not creating. Subdivision fuels growth. Once you create lots, that fuels growth. But if you're just only adjusting a lot line, you're allowing what you thought might happen to happen when, when lots were created. So it should, if you consider it a subdivision, it's minor. And many municipalities define it as otherwise. They don't even consider it a subdivision. They consider it something, something less. Subdivision review requires a public hearing. For some reason, I often get calls, like, there, there, there are weeks that I feel like I get multiple calls like this a week. Well, if, can we, can we find a way to not require a public hearing for subdivision? You can do it in one meeting. If, but you have to have a public hearing. And for some reason, there, there is a drive of local governments, like, there, there's an incentive that people feel to try to pull off subdivision review without a public hearing. This is your chance. If it's just a boundary line adjustment, you can call it that and not consider it part of subdivision, and not require a public hearing to have a lot line adjustment, the boundary or lot line adjustment. And so, any, any questions on that? Yes?
For the lot line adjustment, does it have to go before the planning board, or can, like, the enforcement code officer deal with it, with like a surveyor come in, does the survey, he does the paperwork, the two of them work it out together, and it doesn't come before the, like, enforcement?
The question is, can a lot line adjustment not even go in front of the planning board? The answer is yes. Sometimes it's good for the planning board. The advantage of having the planning board review it, and again, this is a, this is a quick review, is that the planning board is multiple people. You can look at where that maybe, there, there could be a little variation that the planning, members of the planning board see. The collective intelligence of five or seven members who are interested in the future of their community, and they understand the zoning regulations and subdivision better than the typical property owner. They might see something, or for that matter, the code official, enforcement official, that's the advantage of having it go in front of the, the board. But if your municipality wants to expedite these reviews and doesn't even feel it's necessary for the planning board to review them, it's something that the code official could be given the authority to sign off on. Yes?
So if that happened, like, I'm a planning board chairperson. I have to sign that that has to go to the county to change that deed. So you're saying that the zoning officer couldn't then sign that? Because my name has, I have to go into the county and, and fill out a form that I'm authorized to sign these?
Yes, it's something that the, the code official can, can sign off on. If it's, if it's just a, if it's a lot line adjustment, if you're not creating a new lot, if it's just a variation for the, for that filing, then you can, you can create a form and you can, you can do it that way. If, if, if your municipality would rather not, this is, this is a good way to do it, for, for you to sign the, the lot line adjustment. Do you, do you review lot line adjustments?
Yes.
As a special, as, as, as apart from subdivision, or?
Oh, not as part of subdivision.
Not as part of subdivision. So you, you, you do it, it's, it's a, it's a separate definition, and you review them as a planning board?
Yes.
So that, that is preferable for the reasons that I explained. But if, if there were municipalities who were doing it without planning board involvement, that's, that's up to the local governing board. If, if they want to remove the, the planning board involvement, then that's up to the, the, your elected board. It's the same, same for municipalities without zoning or subdivision review. But, but I think the way, the way you're doing is probably the, the way most, most do, or would aspire to, if they knew this were an option, and they didn't have to go through the whole subdivision process. There was another question.
Basically, what you're saying is, it's up to the governing body how you're doing.
Correct, yes. It's, right. It's, it's up to the governing body, right. And, and you all, as planning board members, could recommend, you could say, "We'd like to see it done a little differently, and we want to, we want to review them, but we don't want it to be part of the subdivision process." Yes?
I think an important fact is that both property owners have to be in agreement.
Yes, of course. Well, there's probably some, there might be some money changing hands between those property owners and, or some kind of, of agreement, a bar system. But yes, of course, both property owners have to, have to be in agreement. So the, the elements of subdivision review, you're mostly looking at lot configuration. And for the larger applications that few of us are seeing these days, you've been looking at street pattern, and how the streets and sidewalks are designed, and where utilities go, and access to, for service of the utilities, and drainage and landscaping are also very important for all kinds of subdivisions. You don't want to create subdivisions with all the water draining onto one lot. You want to make sure that lots are big enough to accommodate their, their own drainage. So configure, lot configuration, there's a reason that's up at the top. And cluster or conservation subdivisions, cluster refers kind of generically to keeping the lot size as small as it can be, and clustering the lots in a relatively small area, and maybe preserving the larger parcel of the, the master parcel. And the local governing boards have the ability to allow for cluster subdivision, and that is the same number of lots that the underlying zoning allows on a smaller parcel. And this, and, and the example is right in front of us here. With the benefit of keeping a larger parcel that would ideally be placed in a conservation easement and not further subdivided in the future. But if you don't have, and if you have sewer and water infrastructure, the ability makes, to create smaller lots is, is obviously desirable for any municipality to save land. But if you don't, if you have onsite septic and wells, then an acre and a half, two acres is really as small as you can go. And this was a, cluster subdivision was, was a trend 30 years ago. It was really highly encouraged to, to save open spaces and not gobble up the countryside. And then conservation subdivisions go a step further, where there's an, an extensive process by the planning board and the applicant, and there might be more written into the subdivision regulations to prioritize not just avoiding subdivision on parcels, or not, not creating parcels that are completely undevelopable, but avoid creating parcels that are on prime farmland, or in, in more sensitive environmental areas, and including steep slopes and floodplains and mature forests. So the graphic you see here is kind of that combination of the conservation and cluster. Cluster is in statute. Conservation is just a further definition, refinement of the idea of a concert, of a cluster subdivision that really prioritizes the preservation of open space and, and valuable farmland, mature forests. And here you have a relatively short road, so limited, limited infrastructure for the town to maintain, or the homeowners association, as the case may be, and some, and a trail system for the people who live in that subdivision to use. And meanwhile, the original farm has been, or most of the original farm has, or as much possible as the original farm with the, however many unit subdivision this is, preserved. The, so just a review of the procedures for subdivision. Remember, the public hearing is required. The review of referral to the county planning agency might be required, although it isn't in Jefferson County, but I think it's about half and a half. This is under general municipal law 239N. So it's optional for the, the county legislative body to require or not referral of subdivisions to the, to the planning agency. You have to consider the state environmental quality review act. We'll, we'll talk a little bit about that later on. There's the ability to set aside money for parkland. If there, if it isn't feasible to put, set land aside, you can ask for money to be put into a dedicated fund for the municipality to either buy or maintain its existing parkland. And very important for subdivision, this is unique, this is unusual. This is, actually, it's unique to subdivisions. After 60, you could have a default approval, which means there's, there's 62, 62 days is a magic number in New York State. It's the number of cities, it's the number of counties, and it's the number of days after the complete application that you have to have a public hearing, and the number of days after the close of the public hearing that you have to make a final decision. So if you miss any of those deadlines, if you get an application, if there's a complete application and you don't have a public hearing within 62 days, then the applicant, if the applicant knows the law, can just go to the county clerk and submit the subdivision and say they missed, they missed the deadline. Here's my subdivision. And, and there should be proof. There, there's a problem, I think, in every county of illegal subdivisions being filed. So there should be some communication between your local board and the county So there should be some communication between your local board and the county clerk to make sure, I, I think there's some counties out, or some municipalities out there that get like a regular report of subdivisions in their, in their municipalities that were filed and they can flag the ones that were illegal before anything was built on them. But that's a story we hear a lot about, or that's a, that's a familiar story for us in the Division of Local Government Services. And if you don't, after the close of the public hearing, if you don't make a decision. And so for a major subdivision, that's four opportunities to miss that deadline, four opportunities for the default, default approval. There are other land use applications, site plan review, special use permit, and use in area variances, appeals to the, to the ZBA after the public hearing. They have similar deadlines, I should just say that and not, not make the decision, distinction. That 62 day deadline is there for other applications, but it's not, there's no automatic consequence, whereas there is for subdivision, that automatic consequence. If you miss that deadline, the applicant, the subdivision could be approved by default. So any questions about that? Site plan review. You sure there are no questions about subdivision? Because we're, we're turning the page to, to site plan review. Site plan review is the review more of the design of a proposal for a single property and it applies mostly to commercial properties. There are few municipalities that have site plan review, site plan review for single or two family residences. Mostly it's in commercial zones, it's, it's a commercial, anything, any zone more intensive than two family residential would be subject to site plan review. And sometimes it's only certain uses, but usually it's by zone. And something more by, by zone or by use, I should say, as, as I'm looking back at the screen, I'm reminded, something is not necessary to an act site plan review. Does everybody, is everybody here from a municipality with zoning or are there any that don't have zoning? Any that don't have zoning? Okay, so we don't have to talk about how you can use site plan review without zoning. It's, it's challenging, but it's, it's possible. Some municipalities that are reluctant to adopt zoning might have site plan review and subdivision regulations, but it's, it's easiest to use the three tools in conjunction when you have, when you have zoning. So the, obviously the review board has to be delegated, but very important, list those use, well, list those elements the board may review. I already talked about uses subject to review. The elements the board may review, that's on the next slide. And obviously submission requirements, local procedures. Statute doesn't require a public hearing for site plan review, so if you decide you want to have a public hearing locally, you could put it in your law, but if you don't have a public hearing, if you put it in your local law, then you have to have a public hearing. And obviously enforcement authority, that goes to the enforcement official, usually the same person enforces the zoning, the same person enforces zoning also, or the same person enforces the Uniform Fire Prevention Building Code also enforces zoning, but that might be a little bit different in Jefferson County because I know the county does a lot of the code enforcement. So review elements, the one at the top should be, well, the relationship with adjacent uses, the location and dimension of buildings. And here's just an example. I, I went through the car wash up on the west side of 81, down near the, the big exit with, with all the strip malls, an hour, a couple hours ago. And I was, I was going up to the, the car wash and I'd never been there before and I went past it, I missed the entrance and I was thinking I could get in from the back. And there was probably, that would have been convenient because I'm probably not the first person who's missed that entrance, but it's not all that. It might be difficult for internally to regulate the traffic pattern if there were another entrance in the back. So that was a decision, that was probably a discussion that was had by, I believe that's outside the city, the town of, of our town planning board in deciding the, the ingress and egress and the, the relationship with adjacent buildings. Screening and landscaping, that's aesthetic, how you shouldn't want, you shouldn't have to hide what you're building, but sometimes there are conflicts between adjacent parcels. Architectural features, that might be further down on the list. Most boards don't have that ability, but if you do, if you do, if you want that ability, you should ask for it because, from your local governing board, because a lot of the time, if you don't have these review elements written into your site plan review, you're asking for them. You're asking the developer. Many developers will, will give in. They'll say, well, we want to get this approved, so yeah, we'll give you the, the architectural features on the Dollar General, even though there's no requirement to, if you, there's no harm in asking, but you can't condition the approval on architectural features if that isn't an element of review in your site plan review section of your zoning or your site plan review laws, in case there be sewage and storm drainage, obviously they're important. And location utilities, parking, access and traffic, I touched on that, and, and lighting, lighting and signage, that's, those are, that's a big deal. You know, you can, you can tell how serious a municipality is about zoning when you look at the, the signage law. The sign section of the zoning is like half of the, the rest of the zoning. Some people take signs very seriously. I'm, sit on a historic district advisory board and people do things to buildings and the reason why they're is to preserve the historic fabric. But when somebody puts up a sign that's, that's, that's not permissible, we definitely hear about that. People just really notice signage. And speaking of signage, usually sign permits are part of site plan review or historic district review maybe. And, and, and it's part of zoning. Like if you had a sign law, this was an interesting case that I learned about a few months ago. There was a municipality that had a sign law, adopted the sign law and had, had dimensional requirements of the sign law, but they didn't refer the sign law to the county planning agency. And they said, well, this isn't zoning, it's a sign law, but it had dimensional requirements in it. So it had elements of zoning and the court invalidated enforcement of it when somebody challenged it because it wasn't fact zoning. And the court said, we don't care what you call it, it's zoning because you're regulating dimensional requirements. And it wasn't referred to the county planning agency under general municipal law 239 M, so it's invalid. So we're, there, there's a foreshadowing of the importance of procedure, following procedures, just in that, in that statement. So the planning board can be assigned those other regulatory duties of reviewing and this is where site plan review, and it's really more like a special use permit if you do architectural review or historic district review for certain properties. It's almost like a special use permit for changes to a building in the architectural review district, a building or another structure. So before we get into meetings and hearings, any, any questions? Okay, oh, yes?
I have a question about lighting, part of the review. I wanted, I lived in another state, a different community that had a lot of federal land and they had changed a lot of their local lighting instructions to be dim lights or yellow lights to, and that, that would be where that would fall in there.
Yes, you could put that into your site plan review law. That could be right in site plan review. Where was it, I'm curious?
Flagstaff, Arizona. There's a huge telescope there.
Oh, wow. So there, there was a real drive to...
All the parking lights, all the...
Night sky to keep, to keep lighting fairly dim. And you can really see, even if the lighting downward is intense, bright the lights were and they were maybe a little bright, but they were really pointing downward and that's, that's really important, the direction of the light. And there are ways of measuring the, now I'm going to forget the terms, the luminance or the...
Foot candles.
The foot candles, right. Foot candles are the measurement of light. It's nits, if it's a, if it's a sign that projects, the measurement is in nits, but foot candles is the, the light, light trespass. So if, and there was a, we had a question a couple months ago from somebody, there was an, an application, they wanted to make the, make the lights taller. And with taller lights came more light trespass and they could really regulate. It's possible to regulate that as Flagstaff, Arizona did or does. The, the amount that they could limit, you can limit the foot candles certainly on adjacent properties, but even around where the action is on the property, where the, the structure, the commercial structure or activity is, is occurring. So yeah, that goes right into site plan review. That's among the elements for review that you are authorized to look at, so. And it's really important, like the other night I was, I was just, I was looking at this, it's like all of a sudden, all over lots of cities, there are these LED lights, these really bright lights that go like, get strung around the perimeter of storefront windows. And few municipalities have any regulation to, to control those. And maybe, maybe in some places it makes sense to have them, but they're, they're very bright and they can be limited by what hours they can be turned on, for example, and, and, or how bright they are. And, and that really, that, that, that goes a long way, especially if there's something sensitive nearby, like the, the telescope that was described by the, the question just now. Anybody else? Okay, so the quorum is defined in New York State construction law, section 41, so we, how many times have we looked in town law, village law, general city law for the definition of quorum? It's, it's in construction law. And it's the number of members who have to be present for business to be conducted legally and that's a majority of the fully constituted membership. So if it's a five member board, it's three people. And that includes absent members and vacant seats. So if, if you have two vacant seats or one vacant seat and an absent member, it, it's, it's three, not like, you don't, you consider the, the fully constituted board. And, and that's among the reasons, achieving a quorum is among the reasons why many boards like to have alternates. The purpose of public meetings is, or open meetings law is to allow the public to listen and observe. And in meetings, you don't have to allow the public to comment, but it's generally good practice. They'll appreciate it if you give them the opportunity to speak, even in a regular meeting. Of course, hearings, which we'll talk about in a minute, are specifically for the public to speak. But the, so any time, any business by a planning board, applications have to be discussed in an open forum. If the majority of your planning board is here tonight, we're not discussing applications, it's, it's training, you don't have to notice, we didn't have to notice this training as an open meeting, but if you're meeting to discuss business, if five members or, or a majority, if a quorum of the board happens to be the same event, you don't have to say, oh, no, we can't talk to each other because this is, we're all together, we should be noticing this is an open meeting. If somebody has a barbecue, oh, we've got to invite the public, no. But just don't talk about business, public business in a quorum. Two people can talk alone, but don't talk, don't speak about the public, about public business as a quorum unless you're in the, the forum of an open meeting. And we get hair splitting questions about this, but try to be, try to follow the spirit of the law in addition to the letter of the law. And, and I think everybody probably has, has had those questions themselves. Is this, is this right that we're doing this? You know, if, if you post a meeting, the, a day or two before that nobody sees in an obscure place, you're working to the letter of the law, but not in the spirit and it's only going to come back to bite you because people are going to be angry. If you encourage public participation, nobody can accuse you of not following open meetings law. And we'll talk about, very briefly, it's executive session on probably the next slide. But, so remember, access and notice are the themes of open meetings law. And so post a meeting in a conspicuous place, on your website, on a listserv if you have one, on Facebook if you do that, and other social media. And if you have, if you call a special meeting less than a week ahead, then you should post that meeting as early as you can. And the public officers law was amended a few years ago to require that the agenda and documents, actually I don't even, I'm not sure if the agenda is required, but that should be part of it. Documents that are to be discussed at the meeting aren't available to the public in advance. So that'll cut down on freedom of information law requests or just putting it out there. And, and it should be like just common sense to post the agenda. And if it's not practicable, there, if you don't have regular updates to your website, then you should have copies of the agenda and the applications available at the, at the meeting itself. And I, I wanted to touch, I didn't add this slide about remote public meetings, but I'll emphasize again that the ability to hold meetings remotely has been reissued until, I think, January 15th by the legislature and the governor. And it's similar to those, the requirements or the stipulations are similar to those that were in the executive order last in March of 2020, where you should have, there should be the ability for the public to participate in real time. And that, that doesn't mean you shouldn't encourage people to send emails in advance because managing that public participation can be challenging when you're running a meeting remotely and not everybody can handle that technically. But the, the other stipulation is the, you have, you obviously have to take minutes and you have to take a transcript of the meeting. There has to be a recording available of the remote meeting. And the, the executive order didn't specify when that recording should be available, but it's important to know that that's an option for everybody. There was a question in the back?
Yes. With, with the people not reading the paper, that's where most of our general public laws go into here for the open meetings. Do you really recommend like social media, like Facebook and that kind of thing?
Whatever you think is, yeah, the, the paper for public hearings, for those hearing notices, that's still the law.
Right.
But to get the word out, yes, whatever is, whatever your membership agrees on is a, is the best means of spreading the word about your meetings, use, use those vehicles. And I...
We have like, I don't know how many open, open public meetings we've had and nobody showed, and then late later, then they didn't know about it. Well, nobody reads the paper.
Right, right, unfortunately. And so if you have an email, a lot of the time it's, email listservs I think are really effective in that regard. I know people who are on some of them, I just feel like I get some of the emails already, I don't want anymore. And somehow you kind of hear about these, sometimes when it's a controversial application, somehow the word gets around. somehow the word gets around. But it's, whatever means. I think if your, if your website is updated frequently, that's a really good place for them. And if there's somebody who's doing social media. The thing is, and technology moves faster than I can keep up. And I'm, I'm kind of notorious among my peers as being a little slow with technology. And so I'm the last to adopt the newest mode of technology. I, I feel like every time there's a new platform introduced, there's, it's still work to update it. So like I go, there are lots of things that I use that, there's no website for it because they only use Facebook. And then I get on a Facebook page and the last update was in 2017. So if, if you don't keep these things updated, you should direct people to what's going to be updated. If you don't use social media, then keep it to the website and keep the website updated. So that's, that's all I can suggest. Has anybody used remote meetings? Have you? And if you've used remote meetings, what has been the result? Do you get more people at your remote meetings or less of audience, fewer people? Does anybody just want to let me know what your experience has been? Let the rest of us know? A lot of people I've heard from say, oh, yeah. We've now, there's so many more people at our remote meetings because they don't have to, they don't have to go to the municipal building. They can just do it from their computer. Well, I feel like I'm, I spend so much time, you know, working remotely and doing webinars in front of my computer screen that I don't want to be there another minute. Like, I'm probably more inclined to go physically to the municipal building these days than to, than to log in. But a lot of people, it seems like, just anecdotally, it seems like a lot of people I've heard from have had good success of public participation with their remote meetings. And then of course, we get questions. Is this going to be permanent? And there is some, I know that there is some discussion that the legislature is having about the, the permanent extension or the permanent ability for boards to meet remotely. Nothing, nothing's solid yet. I know it's just, it's just something that's in discussion. And actually, something that a lot of people don't realize is that if you video conference in, if you've got the board in your municipal building and one member participating from a home, or if it's a county planning board meeting, for example, and there's the county planning board in the county building and one of the members in the municipal building in that municipality that that member represents, what you have to do is, that's, that counts. Like you don't need a special exception to participate remotely in that case, except that under public officer's law, open meetings law as it's written now, that person participating at home would have to identify where he or she is participating from and open that space up to the public, which is kind of a, that's something that we don't want to do from home. But if you are, if it's from the municipal building, if it's the county example and somebody's at the municipal building, and the reason is for, for state boards, if there's a meeting of the codes council, for example, maybe in Albany, but there are other remote locations where people can participate in other parts of the state. And that satisfies the requirements of open meetings law. So that's a distinction that, it's, it's an edit to open meetings law that if you didn't have to require that you disclose your location and open it to the public, then our existing open meetings law, if it's by teleconference, you'd be able to participate remotely without a, without a special law. But at the moment, it's, it's a temporary situation until January and you'll probably hear, you'll hear either way from us or elsewhere whether it's being extended. Did you have another question?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm doing this correctly. So if a town decides to do roll, it has to be recorded and it has to be able for the public to be able to view it. Is that correct?
Yes. So you'd have to be, if you, if you're meeting remotely, then there has to be, it could be a teleconference. You could just, you could have a conference call, but then the public would have to be able to call in on a conference call and participate in real time. Most boards that have been meeting remotely have been using Zoom or a similar web-based platform where you would advertise the link and make that available to the public or ask the public if they want to email the clerk if they wanted to participate. And then the clerk would send the link. And in those instances, you have to record the, you have to record the meeting and provide a transcript. Actually, suddenly I'm doubting the need to record, but the transcript is necessary. I think the record, no, a recording has to be made available. Yes, the recording has to be made available and as, as well as a transcript if you, if you need remotely. And many boards are doing something in, something like a hybrid where there's, there's the onsite meeting where a limited number of the public are allowed into the municipal space with maybe not all the members. Maybe there are a couple of members who are concerned about, have special concerns and they want to meet remotely. So hybrid meetings have been fairly popular, I think. It's, it's not as much one extreme or the other as those municipalities capable of doing a hybrid format after doing that.
I'm not sure they all, I'm, I'm going to have to tell you that there's a village that I know that's been having meetings since its time that has not been recorded. The public's not allowed to be there. They're like five-minute meetings and they're out.
Yeah, yeah. Well, unfortunately, that happens more than we'd like to know, but that's not in accordance with the spirit or letter of open meetings law. So whereas, you know, we, some of the webinars that we saw, like one of our biggest was when we did public meetings and hearings last year, right after, you know, a bunch of slides and I, I forgot to stick them in here. And then there was a law firm that did a couple of them. And then those were like sold-out shows. They were, had huge audiences and people were asking these like hair-splitting questions. And the, and the one the attorneys did, they said, if it's, if you're, if you're really trying to be, to comply with the regulations, you know, if people can't call in or something like that, I, I forget what the question was. But if it's obvious you're trying and somebody challenges you and says you violated these, these provisions, but the board has made a valiant effort, then the court will look upon their efforts favorably. Whereas the example that you just gave where the public's not allowed, they're not recording it, they're, it's very closed, that's a different story. So if somebody were to challenge a decision that comes out of a meeting like that, a court might not look upon it as favorably. And speaking of closed-door meetings, a question we get a lot of is executive session. When can we go into executive session? Like we get lots of questions about executive session. Planning boards and zoning boards of appeals should almost never have to go into executive session. These are the reasons why boards can legally go into executive session. And the, some of the only reason, the example that our attorneys used to always give was the history of the person, a history of the person. And that is if you're hiring a clerk for your planning board or ZBA, you might want to talk about the resumes and somebody's past work experience. And that would fall under history of a person. You can do that outside of an open meeting. And executive session is different from attorney-client privilege. Like if you have, if you have, if you as a board have to talk to your attorney about something, that falls outside the jurisdiction of open meetings law. So if there's a question you have for your attorney, actual litigation is another one, but those are, so if you're actually, if your board is being challenged and you have to talk about that litigation, you can go into, that falls under attorney-client privilege. So yeah, we get disproportionate number of questions about executive session. And we talked about quorum. If you are going to look at a site, then you can either do it as a quorum and only make observations and not have any discussion and not post it as an open meeting, or you can go and look at the site in numbers of less than a quorum. And if you have a work session or an agenda meeting, we used to call them workshops, the boards that I used to staff. The boards might, one board I staffed met on a different night for its workshop. Another board I staffed, we'd start at 5:30, the regular meeting, it was at 6:00. So it was open to the public. And the purpose of a work session is to just make sure all the members of the board understand the application. And as, as a member of the planning staff, I would help, I would answer questions and explain certain things to the board members about the application so that they could run the meeting efficiently. And that's something that you could do. And you can say, we're having a work session and it's an open meeting because we're complying with open meetings law, but you can let the public know that they are not entitled to speak during the work session. They can speak during the regular meeting which you're having on another day or at a later, at a later time in the evening. So the case that's up here was about a group that went to look at, went to look at a site together. It was more than a quorum, but they didn't discuss the merits of the application. They just observed and gathered information. And if, if that's all you do, you can do it without, without inviting the public onto the site. And this is all pretty commonsensical information here. Just make sure everything you, all your applications are, are, are well-designed, well-organized and easy to access. It's good to have them online. I just did a new application for the board that I sit on the advisory board. And one is, and the planner put them together, the local planner, I had them as one document, the local planner made them two. One's the application and one's the checklist. And so what happens? The checklist and instructions. So everybody, everyone clicks on the application, just fills out the application. But most of the applications are actually the checklist because photos have to be included and other details. Well, the photos are really, the photos and materials that are proposed for, for, for the, for changes and examples, design examples and sketches are on the checklist. But because most people just want to fill out the application, they think, oh, this is pretty self-explanatory. We don't need the instructions. They only click on the one. So I said, they should be combined because then people will print out the whole thing and they'll see that it's not just the simple application with your name and what do you want to do, but a list of everything else that's needed as part of the application. So you should, as a routine practice, somebody should know, somebody should have some sense of type two and, type two actions for seeker. Many boards, as, as a routine, have their applicants complete part one of the EAF. No matter what, even if it's a type two action. If you choose not to, if the clerk or whoever, or the enforcement official, whoever's giving the application knows that an application is type two in nature and that is under seeker, those applications, those actions that are categorically presumed not to have a significant adverse impact on the environment and so they're exempt from seeker. You don't need, you don't need the type, you don't need part one of the short EAF for type two actions if whoever is the gatekeeper is looking at the applications. But it's, it's good for them to know, make sure you include the short EAF, the part one of the short EAF if the action is unlisted. And if it's type one in nature, an action is presumed to have a significant adverse environmental impact, then make sure the applicant completes part one of the full EAF. And I'm getting ahead of myself with seeker. Make sure that you're on top of the referral for the county to the county if it's subject to General Municipal 239M. If you don't have board rules of procedure, we have some examples that we share on a regular basis. And these go beyond your regulations. They settle questions like what you see here, like who, what are the, what are the duties of the officers of the board? How do you handle applications by non-owners? We get those occasionally, like how can you prove that the owner approves? How can we be sure the owner approves of the application? How do we handle signatures on official documents? What's the procedure for minutes? Do we, do we submit a draft to the clerk and then approve them? And then, and then submit the final? Not every board, it's not required that boards approve minutes, but you have, you definitely have to file them. And most boards do look at them after they've been drafted. And they, most boards file a draft within five days of the decision. And then at their next meeting, they'll look at the minutes and approve them. And rules of procedure are really helpful when a longtime board member or chair is absent and then the rest of the board can kind of handle the meeting. As I mentioned earlier, public hearings are held for the purpose of receiving valid comment. And they are required by statute for special use permits, applications, subdivision applications, preparation of a comprehensive plan. And if you require a locally second review. And of course, any appeal to the zoning board appeals requires a public hearing as well. And sending notices in the mail is not a required, is not a statutory requirement. That's not something that is, is something that the state requires. It's something that many local governments require, the mail notice to the owner of the property. That can sometimes be problematic if the owner has moved and the assessor's records haven't been updated. And we had the discussion a little while ago about the legal notice in the official newspaper. And then of course, there's the requirement to send applications to the regional park agency when, and I, when the application is within five feet of the state park or parkway. And we talked about, we touched on, and we'll talk a little more a little later on about General Municipal Law 239M. But some examples of local requirements include posting property if it's subject to a public hearing, either in the window or on a stake or on a tree, as in the photo here. And it might be, the noticing requirement might be on the municipal website or listserv that that's fairly common as well. But it's actually, posting property like this is actually, is recommended for, so that everybody around them knows that it's subject to a public hearing. So we are getting close to the end of the course here, I think. And keep those questions coming. And then we, we might have a few minutes at the end. The secret process, very briefly, and I think there's a graphic that floats. The seeker process, very briefly, and I think there's a graphic, a flowchart on the next page. If you don't like flowcharts, this is one of my favorite ways of explaining the seeker process. An agency proposes an action and receives an application. So it's most common that you, as planning zoning board members, receive an application. But we do have some local governing board members in the audience. So if the local governing board is initiating an action or adopting a comprehensive plan or a new local law, for example, you would do this, you would consider the State Environmental Quality Review Act and follow through with the seeker process for those actions that you're taking. The first step is that the action is classified. Remember I talked about type-two actions? Those are actions that are categorically determined not to have an adverse environmental impact. So once you determine it's, you classify the action as type-two, seekers don't. And every time you see a red asterisk, it means that seeker can end at this point. If it's type-one, it's on a list in the seeker regulations. And somebody, everybody on the board should have a copy of the seeker regulations or have them bookmarked or have regular access to them online. The type-one actions are categorically, it's a list of actions that are presumed to have an adverse environmental impact. So you need the full EAF, the full environmental assessment form to proceed. Unlisted actions are those that fall in between, neither type-two nor type-one. And you can use the short EAF for, to review unlisted actions. Then you go through the questions. The applicant completes part-one, the board, the lead agency. And sometimes it's only one agency, it's not more than one. It's only the planning board reviewing it, but sometimes it's the planning board, the zoning board appeals. There might be another agency involved, like the health department, or the DEC, or the Department of Transportation. But, so if it's multiple agencies, if it's only one agency, the one agency does, completes part-two of the EAF. And if it's multiple agencies, you distribute the information. And then the information is gathered. One of the important points about seeker, it's an information gathering tool. It's a mitigation tool. It's not there to stop projects, it's there to mitigate the environmental impacts of them. And then, so the, once you have that information from, from the, from involved agencies, those agencies with decision-making authority and interested agencies, those agencies that have the information to provide to the lead agency, you make a determination of significance, the all-important determination of significance, as our principal attorney used to say. And that is a POSDEC or a NEGDEC. A positive declaration means that it is likely to have a significant adverse impact on the environment and therefore more information is needed and an environmental impact statement is required. If it's a negative declaration, that means that it is, the impacts will be mitigated or there are no significant impacts and the application can proceed. And if the, so it can stop there. If it's a NEGDEC, negative is good for the developer because it means that, or the applicant, I should say, because it means that the project can proceed under your local regulations. And another point about seeker that's really important is it doesn't substitute for good local regulations. It'll never go as far as your local regulations will. You can always, and again, and I said this a minute ago, but it's not there to stop projects. If there are activities that the, that the community doesn't want in certain locations, the only way you can stop, the best way to stop them is through zoning. You can run out the clock with seeker or run out the patience of the applicant or project sponsor in seeker terms. But that's not what seeker was intended for. If the determination of significance is positive, then the applicant needs to produce an environmental impact statement which includes alternatives and alternatives to what's been proposed, including the no-action alternative. And after that's concluded, the agency reviews it, makes findings on the environmental impact statement, and makes its decision on the application. So there's, we have a two-hour course on seeker and I just went through it pretty quickly. And this is the same as what I just described in flowchart form. And it could get more complicated than this. The type-one action is presumed to have an adverse environmental impact. So it means the full EAF. There's the coordination of review among agencies. So the lead agency says, "We're lead, we'll take information from the other agencies." And then, but everything ends up, whether it's unlisted or type-one, with the all-important determination of significance. And, but type-two, it's a pretty quick, a very quick end to the seeker process. There is a provision of general municipal law called general municipal law 239NN. And some of our colleagues say that stands for nice neighbor. It doesn't really, but it's a good way to remember it. Within 500 feet of an adjacent municipality, if there is an application for a subdivision site plan or special use permit, you are required by general municipal law to send notice at the public hearing to the clerk of the adjacent municipality, or if it's site plan review, without a public hearing, just the application, at least 10 days prior to the hearing on those proposed actions. And there's no further detail in statute about what is required. You just have to notify the neighbor. And this is one little step toward regional planning in New York so that the adjacent municipality, because a lot of the time, a really large proposal will have an impact on the adjacent municipality. So it's an ability, it's a communication device for local officials from the adjacent municipality to have some influence maybe on the outcome of maybe conditions only, but to approve the results of an application near their border. And I mentioned, of course, earlier, general municipal law 239M, which is the requirement to send the application to the county planning agency. And subdivisions only where required by the county legislative body. So not in Jefferson County, but other zoning authorizations. That means when you're adopting zoning or a law that's like zoning, remember my sign example a little earlier, you have to send the, you have to send the packet, the application, the proposal to the county planning agency. And most of the time, and I'll emphasize at the bottom here, failure to refer. This is the easiest way. If you violate general municipal law 239M, it's the easiest way to get, to get your application for somebody who doesn't like your decision. It's the easiest way to get it to court. And there are differing opinions. There are differing, there have been differing responses by the appellate division of state Supreme Court, different departments of the appellate division regarding 239M, violations to 239M. Some courts have said that there is a much longer statute of limitations than the typical 30 days because it's a jurisdictional deficiency, especially when you're adopting legislation. So it's a really important procedural step. And how is, how, what is the trigger to refer to the county planning agency? It's when applications are within 500 feet of these landmarks. Usually, I think, the trigger is state or county roads. But areas, if it's an area variance that's being requested, it's exempt. It's exempt from that bottom trigger, the farm operation. If somebody's requesting area variance within 500 feet of a farm operation in a state agricultural district, you don't have to refer to that course. Counties can have referral agreements with their local governments to cut down on the need to send applications that end up being no county-wide impact. It's a local decision because the county can respond in one or four ways. It can recommend approval, it can recommend denial, it can recommend approval with some modification. And it can say, the county can respond by saying, "There's no county-wide impact to this application." And a lot of the time, I think, might correct me if I'm wrong, the response by the county is no county-wide impact. And, but that doesn't preclude the ability of the county planning staff to say, "Even though there's no county-wide impact, we're making this informal recommendation for the benefit of the local planning board and your community." Your county, when you refer an application to the county, there are professional planners looking at it. And any opportunity for another set of eyes to look at an application, especially ones that are maybe a little detached from the application itself and aren't too close to it, there's perspective that they might have. And so the whole referral process is, gives the ability for that kind of communication. So it's a, it's a good thing all around. But here's some examples of items that might be exempt from county referral. You could put together an agreement between the local government and the county so not to have too many of these types of applications if there is limited value in sending them. One line of justice is all around. Okay, oh, there's referral timelines for special use permits and site plans. There is the requirement that you get to the county planning agency at least 10 days prior to the public hearing. If there's no public hearing needed locally, you have to send, just get the site plan there as soon as you can. Subdivisions, as we said earlier, you're only required, you're authorized by the county legislative body. But a more important timeline is that the planning board may not take final action. It's not in the planning board's jurisdiction to take final action until you've received the report, the final report by the county planning agency or 30 days have passed since the county planning agency received the full statement. And the, there's a, the two-day exemption refers to if that 30 days have passed, but the local board hasn't met yet, as long as the, if the planning, if the county planning agency gets its full, gets its referral back to the local board at least two days before that local board meets, even if it's two months later, if the local board doesn't meet the month in between. And it's 60, it's 60 days since the planning, the county planning agency has received the full statement. But the, but the county planning agency responded on the 55th day and on the 60th day, the local board is, is getting ready to vote, the local board has to take into consideration the county's recommendations, the county's referral, the county's, the county's recommendation. So, and it can be extended if the local board and the county planning agency agree mutually. And don't take this last point, I know a lot of people do this. One of the boards I staffed did it once. And I thought, "Well, they're voting unanimously." If the county planning agency recommends denial, they'll override it. And if you override the county planning board's or the county planning agency's recommendation, you have to say why. But they took the vote and realized that we hadn't referred the application to the county planning agency. And the board said, "Well, contingent on the county planning agency's approval, we'll make this vote." Don't do that because it's not in your jurisdiction. And if, that could be if somebody disagrees with your decision, that's the easiest way for it to get to court if it's found that it was not referred before it was voted on. Motion will only pass if it gets the support of the fully constituted board. If it's not, if there are three members at the meeting and two voted in favor of it and one votes against, the motion, then there's no action. It's the, it's as if you never voted on it. So you just have to keep voting and remember the default approvals for subdivision. If you're not, if you're having trouble getting a quorum, that's, that's one of the reasons why you might want to have an alternate because you don't want to have that default approval. You don't want to hold up applicants, especially if it's an easy application. And members may vote even if they've missed previous presentations or meetings. But those members should familiarize themselves with the record, including alternates. And members, and they should state so, that they should state on the record that they have familiarized themselves with the record. And I mentioned the subdivision, the default approval. Voting contrary to the county's recommendation, you need a majority plus one. As I mentioned earlier, you have to explain why you voted contrary to the county's recommendation. And that doesn't happen very often in most counties. I've heard a few places where they say, "Oh yeah, the county planners have said, 'Oh yeah, they override our recommendations once in a while.'" But whenever I ask, it's, the answer is generally no. The local officials take the positions of the county planning agency seriously and value them. Your findings are the meshing, the, there's a really good, it's not, oh, it's an analysis that applies law to facts leading to conclusions. I'm a little rusty, this is only my second presentation this season. But sometimes I can come up with that, but sometimes I have to read it. It's written better than I could come up with it without reliance on this. It's an analysis applying the law to the facts of the case leading to conclusions. So it's a justification of the action that the board took. Either explaining the conditions, why conditions were imposed, why the special use permit was granted, especially if it was a controversial application and there are a lot of people coming out in opposition to the special use permit. The board can use its findings to justify its decision. And if it's a denial, so that the findings can be used to defend the denial if the applicant challenges that denial by, by the board, by the planning board. And the findings should be part of the record. And a lot of the, many boards attach findings only for the more controversial applications for those that are most straightforward. They do include some justification in the minutes. It shouldn't just be the application was approved. It should, there should be some more substance and justification as to why the application was approved or denied, as the case may be, or why conditions were attached. But usually, the full-blown findings might be drafted by the municipal attorney if the nature of the application is more controversial and there's a potential for a lawsuit. Either way, the board votes. Either way, the board votes. The, you should determine what constitutes official filing. It's usually the draft minutes filing, filing the draft minutes with the municipal clerk is filing, and it should be done by, and then you could have a separate decision document, but usually that's just done as part of the minutes. And I, I don't know if I mentioned, I've mentioned challenges to decisions. Decisions of the planning board can't be appealed to the zoning board appeals or the local governing board. Somebody who's not happy with the conditions you attach to their site plan review, or the denial of a subdivision, the denial of one of those useless lots, or the useless undevelopable lots, or the denial of a site, a special use permit can't be appealed to the local governing board. They have to be taken if the applicant is aggrieved. The next step is state Supreme Court, and that has to be done within 30 days. And that's one of the reasons filing with the municipal clerk within five days is so important, because the longer filing, if you don't file for 30 days, then you're giving the applicant an extra month to appeal the decision in court if, if the applicant is not happy with it. And it's important, if, if the application was referred, you might send your minutes or copy the decision to the, to the county planning agency. It's, it's important for the county planning agency, it's a requirement to send the county the, the result of the decision. When I was doing this, I made a practice, I just always sent our minutes to the county planning agency. That's an easy way to satisfy that requirement. And as I mentioned earlier, attach findings, the analysis of law based on the facts leading to the conclusion to the decision document. And that's it. Remember these, the email address and the phone number if you have any questions or any difficulty finding any of the information on our website. And don't be shy, ask us questions, and if you have any questions now, let me, let me know. Is there anybody with questions still? Or, I was glad to get them during, during the presentation, there were some good questions that came on. Does anybody have anything else at this point?